Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting, City of Monterey for Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Jennifer, can we do roll call?
Yes, we have Vice Chair Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
As Zoom.
We've got six commissioners present today, and for staff, we have Community Development Director Kim Cole, City Attorney Chrissy Dobby, and myself, Recording Secretary Jennifer Cleary. And if you don't mind, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce to the public how they could join our meeting live.
Please do.
Members of the public are encouraged to join our Zoom meetings, our meetings live via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a ten-second delay and Comcast Channel twenty-five with up to a ninety-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, toll-free. Once again, that toll-free phone number to call is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, and enter the webinar ID, which is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. This meeting's webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. If that first phone number doesn't work, please try another. There are more listed on the meeting agenda. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that meeting, that limit. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. There's a couple of things that I wanted to point out. We're going to alternate between those of you who would like to speak to what's on our agenda tonight, between the council chambers and those who might be online. And I also wanted to note that we have a full commission here tonight. Hudson has resigned his position, and so I'm acting as vice chair until we can appoint another chair and vice chair, which will be at a future meeting. So we'll go next on our agenda is public comments. At this time, the public may speak to for a maximum of three minutes on any subject which is within the jurisdiction of the Monterey Planning Commission and which is not on the agenda. So if anybody has anything they'd like to say, please come up, state your name, and we'll go from there. Is there anybody online that?
I see no hands, but we do have some attendees. So just once again, to provide comments via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute.
Now, are these comments not on the agenda?
Not on.
These are for comments not on the agenda, and I seen.
Review of the planning.
Correct.
Okay, yes. I see no hands raised.
And nobody from the council chambers has stepped up, so we're. Next on our agenda. I heard that. Let me see what we can do. Okay. Next on the agenda, item number two is consider recommending an ordinance to the city council repealing and replacing city code chapter thirty-eight, Article seventeen, one-twelve-point-four related to wireless communication facilities. This is exempt. You have a staff report, please.
If you press the little line in the top corner of that box, it'll go slowly. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher and Commissioners. This afternoon, that presentation has two parts. I'm going to give a brief timeline overview of where we started with wireless back in two thousand eighteen and where we are today, and there's been a lot of milestones met along the way. The second part of the presentation will be from our legal counsel, Gail Koresh. I know that the Planning Commission wanted an update on the legal cases and the legal background for wireless, because it's been some time since we've done that. So when did all this really start? For me, one of the key milestone states was in March of two thousand eighteen at a planning commission meeting. Some of you sat on the commission at that time. At that time, the city had received applications for thirteen small cells. Those are the ones that are installed usually on existing power poles in the right-of-way for the in the Monterey Vista neighborhood. At the time, staff recommended denial to the planning commission of ten of the thirteen small cell applications. And then the applicant then withdrew the almost the remaining number of applications of twelve. And the one that was not withdrawn was that was recommended for approval by staff. The planning commission ultimately denied that application. Shortly after that meeting, the city received from the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association, a redraft of the city's wireless ordinance. And a public effort really sort of was initiated. And at the April seventeen, two thousand eighteen council meeting, the council directed the planning commission to take two actions. One is consider options for strengthening the city's wireless application requirement, and two, make a recommendation to the city council that is consistent with federal regulation. And that came to the Planning Commission in June of two thousand eighteen. The Planning Commission recommended that the city council create a wireless subcommittee. In July seventeenth of two thousand eighteen, the city council received a report on the risks of a moratorium ordinance. That was one of the sort of questions that was out there, is should the city adopt a moratorium? And at the time, the council discussed this issue, directed staff to expedite an amendment of the current ordinance with advice of a subcommittee, and come back to the council on August of two thousand eighteen with a plan for the ordinance to be improved in November or December of that year. And then a timeline for ordinance process and when feasible, pursue incremental modifications of the ordinance. In August of two thousand eighteen, the city council appointed the wireless subcommittee based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And then I didn't write subcommittee, 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 but when you see a date with nothing beside it, those were the subcommittee meetings that were held. And so we started off in August and September. There were five subcommittee meetings. And then the city council at the same time was trying to take actions to become more proactive in this arena. And this never came in front of the Planning Commission, but the city council authorized joining a coalitions of communities represented by Best Best and Krieger to challenge the FCC proposed proposed orders at that time that would, among other things, limit local control over small cell facilities and drastically reduce wireless permitting timelines. This case eventually became referred to as the Portland litigation, which the city was part of at its initiation. After those five subcommittee meetings in August and September, staff brought forth, based on subcommittee recommendation, ordinance changes, and that's actually the ordinance that we have in effect today. That ordinance was ultimately considered by the Planning Commission and recommended for approval in September twenty-fifth. We had another subcommittee meeting, and then the city council adopted those ordinance changes in October of two thousand eighteen, sort of well in advance of their initial deadline. But the second part of that initial council direction was that as time permits to continue working on revisions to the wireless ordinance. And so what you'll see is we had a lot of meetings through two thousand eighteen. We did bring in November of two thousand eighteen, a new wireless checklist. You might remember that. Continued through two thousand eighteen. And then really, at the direction of the city council, the city initiated amendments to its encroachment ordinance. And there was discussions of those amendments in July of two thousand nineteen, more subcommittee minutes or meetings. And then in September of two thousand nineteen, there was a vote to recommend the ordinance to the Planning Commission. And then ultimately, as the ordinance was continuing to be refined in October of two thousand nineteen, staff requested that the council dissolve the wireless subcommittee. The council said, no, give them another forty-five days to try to come to final agreement on some of the details. We held those meetings in December, and then in late December, the council dissolved the subcommittee. At that same time, that ordinance on the encroachment ordinance was going through, and in February of two thousand twenty, the city council passed the city's new encroachment ordinance. And then, of course, we had COVID, and everything sort of came to a little bit of a halt for a while. But at the same time, there were some very important rulings happening in the courts, and I'm going to let our legal teams talk about that. But in August of two thousand twenty, there was a Ninth Circuit ruling in the Portland case. In September of two thousand twenty, the coalitions of cities, including Monterey, filed a petition for the full appellate court to review the ruling in the Portland litigation. In October of two thousand twenty, the Ninth Circuit denied the request to review the ruling in the Portland litigation. In March of two thousand twenty-one, the coalitions of cities petitioned the United States Supreme Court for review of the ruling. And in June of two thousand twenty-one, the United States Supreme Court denied the request to review the Ninth Circuit decision in the Portland litigation. At the, sort of at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, as staff, we put on as a very high priority again, the wireless ordinance. We, our legal teams were working on staff on reviewing the final draft by the subcommittee that was presented to the Planning Commission in April of this year. And we had planned, and as you know, intended to have the meeting in June. And it was very sad, one of our legal council members, Joe Van Eaton, died unexpectedly. And so we're here in front of you today in August of twenty-two with the ordinance that was originally sent to the subcommittee, revised by the subcommittee through a series of meetings, and then ultimately it has undergone legal review. And since the last meeting in April, we received a lot of comments. We've gone through all of those comments. We made some additional recommendations on changes to the ordinance. But, you know, overall, I think the ordinance remains fairly intact from our April recommendation to you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gail Koresh, our legal staff. Let me just stop this share.
Could we break this down for a second and to see if commissioners have questions of you?
Sure.
On the background only, commissioners, any questions on background? Okay.
I guess I do have one. Can you describe the subcommittee's membership?
Sure. We had two planning commissioners. The planning commissioners were Commissioner Dawson and Commissioner Brassfield. We had several neighborhood representatives, Susan Nine from the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association, David Breedlove from the New Monterey area. And I can't believe I'm forgetting Mr. Olson, he's. Who was the other person, Mike?
It was Herbert, who sadly had a stroke at one of our meetings and didn't notice.
That was a bad moment. So, and so we had at least three citizens of Monterey on that committee.
Right.
It did dissolve in two thousand nineteen, and then I'm just taking, I actually can't believe I forgot.
No, that I didn't mean to put you on the spot. So then each meeting was two to three hours or something.
They were usually longer than that.
Really?
Some of them at the end, you know, the committee really went line by line, and some of them were four to five hours. So the committee spent a long time debating and discussing the draft ordinance.
Okay, and the staff sort of moderated these meetings?
So I attended every subcommittee meeting. And on occasion, our legal staff, if there was a specific legal question, they would come to the meeting. And I think ultimately, the, you know, we really saved the final legal review because there were so many changes being made to the ordinance. It made sense to do that in a comprehensive way after the subcommittee had completed its review.
Great, thank you.
I have just one question. So it's so interesting to read the comments, which attack both the overarching theme and also some very, very specific details. But would it be fair to say that what the draft is today really still has the same structure, but with amended language as the original ordinance? As laws have changed and situations have changed, we're amending a basic structure.
I would agree with that. I think if you look back, and you know, the draft we presented to you in April, we had the line-out strike-out version from the subcommittee, so you can see every change that was made.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions on background?
Oh, well, not on background, but on the reported shape of typos and grammar. Have an opportunity.
Yes.
Summit on changes on that.
I'll make sure we get that opportunity for you, Stephen.
Thank you.
I guess we can move on with our legal briefing.
So on the screen, you can see Gail Koresh. You're not going to be able to see. You might want to wave, Gail, so that everyone knows who you are. So. She's the one with the Best Best and Krieger partial emblem behind her. So. Ed and. Let me just. Oh, I just did this wrong. I'm sorry. I'll share my screen. Okay, Gail.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for having me here. I'm of mixed emotions really, because I'm very sad to lose a dear friend and colleague, Joe Van Eaton, who I know provided advice to you over a long period of time, and although I assisted him, assisted him with with that and worked, you know, in many other cities in California and elsewhere on these issues. So I'm happy to provide a brief kind of refresher plus legal update on wireless. There've been, it's a complex area, and there've been quite a number of changes in the law, even just in the last several years. So if you go to the next slide, please. So I'm, I'm, as I mentioned, and by the way, my name is Gail Karish, and I'm a partner at Best Western Krieger. I'm out on the West Coast. So I'm in your time zone, unlike Joe Van Eaton, who often joined from the East Coast. I'm going to speak about state law first and then federal law. I have not, not a ton of slides. I've, I'm just going to highlight the basic concepts. I'm happy to, in the basic outlines of the law, happy to answer any additional questions. Next slide, please. So state law, I think the primary focus of this first slide is really on what are the limitations or the rights of cities to regulate wireless installations in the public rights of way. And there are, the main provision that we focus a lot of attention on is California Public Utility Code Section seventy-nine oh one, which is a state law franchise grant to telephone companies, including wireless companies, to construct facilities along and upon any public roads within the state. And that that right is not completely unfettered. They can can do so, but they may not, and this is an old statute, and so the language is kind of arcane, but they may not incommode the public use of the road or highway. And there is an important case that happened and was decided by the California Supreme Court in two thousand nineteen, which confirmed something that the federal courts interpreting state law had had said probably a decade before. But T-Mobile filed an action in state court challenging some city of San Francisco regulations, and it was determined by the California Supreme Court that, under Public Utility Code seventy-nine oh one, the review of applications by local governments to see if they would whether or not incommode the public use of the road or highway had an element of discretionary review, and the local government could consider aesthetics. So that was a very important Supreme Court, California Supreme Court decision interpreting a longstanding state law. The other two mentioned here, Public Utility Code seventy-nine oh one point one, that is the power that you have as a local government to reasonably regulate time, place, and manner in which roads are accessed. And that allows you to have permitting, and it allows you to have traffic control and things like that. So it's dealing with the access to the the roadways. And those regulations must be applied to all entities in an equivalent manner. And finally, another Public Utility Code section that's important is a general section in twenty-nine oh two that allows local governments to regulate, really retains with local governments as part of their police power, the right to regulate use and repair of public streets, location of poles, wires, mains, conduits of any public utility, to the extent not preempted by California Public Utilities Commission regulation. So that's the law with a little bit of update on in the public right of way. More generally, with respect to wireless at the state level, there are several government code sections. There is Government Code six-five-nine-six-four, which prohibits escrow deposits, odds are still okay. Permits of less than ten years are not allowed unless there is a public safety or land use reason for having a permit of less than ten years for a wireless facility. And there is also a prohibition, I guess, requiring all facilities to be located on sites owned by particular parties. So you couldn't, for example, say, we only allow wireless on government-owned property. That would not be permitted by that government code section. More recent laws that have passed, been adopted that are important to note, Government Code six-five-nine-six-four. Um, government code six five nine six four point one, which was adopted in twenty fifteen. And it provided, I'll get to federal law in a moment. I'm, I think you're all aware that there are shot clocks with timelines for action uh imposed on local governments under federal law. What this government code section does is it provides a deemed approved remedy for um in twenty fifteen, when it was adopted, two of the FCC shot clocks, the ones that existed at the time. That was a ninety day shot clock for colocations and a hundred and fifty day shot clock for other applications. Now, I want to note that this remedy, this deemed approved remedy, if you miss that shot clock, the state law deemed approved remedy is not available if the proposed placement is on a fire department facility. Uh, another uh government code section that limits local authority that was adopted um just a few years ago and is is temporary, it will expire, it's only for three years and it will expire January first, twenty twenty four, is is a code provision that was adopted AB twenty four twenty one. That statute was, it is intended to facilitate the installation of backup generators at macro cell sites. So it temporarily imposes a sixty day shot clock and mandatory approval of emergency generators at macro cell sites that meet certain qualifications and size, volume of the tank and things like that listed in the statute. It does not apply to small cells, does not apply to distributed antenna systems, and it does not apply to facilities. And as I mentioned, it's a temporary relief for the industry to allow them to quickly get approvals to put uh backup generators, emergency generators at macro cell sites. Now, the last one on the list is actually the oldest state law uh for wireless, one that was adopted, I think in two thousand and six. And it was intended to allow for discretionary permit for a facility that would then sort of pre-approve colocation facilities, and there would be no discretionary review of the co-located, the the additional facilities that would be added later that were sort of pre-approved. That um code provision exists on paper, but it is rarely invoked. So um it's there and and one of the reasons why it's rarely invoked is because it requires a certain level of environmental review um that usually uh with wireless facilities. Um, the environmental review determines that they are categorically exempt from C plus, so it doesn't uh trigger this uh provision. Next slide, please. So some more recent state laws. Uh, I had mentioned uh that in twenty fifteen, the the state had adopted that deemed granted remedy for the the two FCC shot clocks that had been adopted by the FCC in two thousand and nine. Well, uh, last year, that deemed granted remedy was expanded by the state legislature in AB five thirty seven, which took effect in January this year. And it now uh provides for a deemed granted remedy for the the new FCC shot clocks that were adopted in twenty eighteen specifically for small cells. So that's the sixty day colocation and ninety day um newer replacement facility shot clocks for small cells also now have a deemed granted remedy. Uh, if if the deadline is missed. So that allows deemed granted remedy means it allows the applicant to basically send a notice to the local government and say, you missed your deadline for action, so my application should be deemed approved. Another recent state law same year in twenty twenty one is SB three seven eight, uh which also took effect in January. And it is not about wireless, but it's related to wireless because it uh requires local governments to allow micro trenching. Micro trenching is a construction technique that is has a very a small cut in the roadway that is not very deep. And that it with the purpose of laying fiber. Uh, so um that had been kind of a controversial practice. When asked, a lot of cities' public works departments were unsure if that would be, you know, how that would affect the longevity of the roadways. Um, so there was some resistance to allowing micro trenching. Um, the um legislature uh adopted this law that that requires local jurisdictions to allow micro trenching. And the final state law that I want to note, um, it's actually one that got vetoed by the governor. And that was SB five five six. That was the second time that the industry asked the legislature to adopt a small cell bill that would regulate uh and limit local authority with your with respect to uh installations of small wireless facilities. The um the prior a- attempt was in was in twenty seventeen. Uh, that bill was passed by the legislature and and vetoed by the the governor uh at the time, and uh the industry took another uh shot at it in twenty twenty one, and it was passed by the legislature but vetoed by governor news. So with the only specific regulations in California that that address um or put limits on your uh local authority to regulate small cells. So you have the state law that that allows use of the public right of way, and then you have the FCC regulations. You do not have a state law. There are probably half the states in the country actually have a state-level small cell uh law. So uh California is um one that does not. Okay, that's state law. Now I'm going to turn to some updates on federal law. So just as a reminder, um uh since nineteen ninety six, it's sort of the dawn of the age of installing wireless facilities, there's been um a national policy in the Telecommunications Act um that supports wireless deployment and places some mostly just procedural limits, but a few substantive limits also on uh local authority with respect to the processing and of wireless applications. So there is a national deployment policy uh that no local decision or regulation can prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service. Meaning there are there are, there's no possibility to say simply, we don't want wireless in our community at all. Go to the next town. Um, i- if there is an ability of the um carrier to show that there would be an effective prohibition of personal wireless service, um that they are allowed on some level to to place wireless facilities in the community. There's also a national um level of RF emissions guidelines. So the localities can ensure that the applicant has shown they will comply with FCC guidelines, but the Federal Communications Commission is the authority within the country that can establish what are safe RF emissions. Uh, timely action is required. Uh, deadlines and remedies for failure to act on applications is what the FCC has been very busy with with their shot clocks, but the there's a national policy that there should be timely action on applications. There's also uh a requirement in federal law that if there is a denial of an application, it must be in writing and based on substantial evidence. That means it has to be founded in uh what are the requirements of your code. Uh, there is also a requirement uh for non-discrimination. So there can be no unreasonable discrimination among providers of functionally equivalent services. The federal law allows for expedited appeals. They have a uh ability to get expedited appeals of uh denials. And there are some mandatory approvals under federal law. This is in more recent legislation that was adopted in twenty uh well, signed into law in twenty twelve. And that's the modifications to existing wireless facilities that qualify under rules developed by the FCC. Um, that they qualify as what they call eligible facilities requests must be approved at the local level. So that's the national policy. There, um, as was already mentioned, there were several orders in in twenty eighteen. One FCC order uh banned moratoria, so uh on uh processing of uh telecommunications and wireless applications. Um, the um small cell order, in the small cell order, the FCC did a number of things. They adopted uh some changes to the way they um consider effective prohibitions. They imposed for the first time some limitations on your aesthetic ability to uh adopted aesthetic regulations, saying that aesthetic regulations for small wireless facilities must not prohibit or effectively prohibit provision of personal wireless services. And the FCC had come up with four um limitations on aesthetics. Two of them were struck down by the Ninth Circuit. So what you see here in this slide, the aesthetic requirements for small wireless facilities must be reasonable, meaning technically feasible and reasonably directed to avoiding or remedying the intangible public harm of unsightly or out-of-character deployments. So they have to be reasonable and they have to be published in advance. Uh, and that's in advance of an application being submitted. So you cannot um retroactively apply uh a standard to uh an application that gets submitted. But what the um uh in response to a petition that um the city was a part of, of trying to get this FCC order overturned in which our firm um and Joe Van Eaton and I uh represented that uh large coalition. Um, we we were successful in getting the Ninth Circuit to eliminate two requirements that the FCC had imposed. So we're no longer required or aesthetic requirements are no longer required to be no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployments. And they are not required to be objective. So there can be some subjectivity to the to the uh requirements. They still have to be reasonable. Um, but they don't have to be like a building code that is all just objective requirements. You either need it or you don't. So the that was um uh an important victory, I think, for local governments. And you'll see language in your ordinance that that um retains that ability to have some subjectivity uh so that you can actually consider what is out of character or within the character of the community. Uh, so uh I would also note that spacing and separation and setback requirements for small cells are subject to those same sort of federal standards that they have to be reasonable, published in advance um and and uh geared towards um avoiding um, you know, unsightly or out-of-character deployments. So aesthetic aesthetic-based regulation. Next slide, please. So this has got a lot of words on it, these, this one and the next one, and I apologize in advance, but I think there's been uh some level of confusion on this. So this is um the effective prohibition standard that was upheld by the Ninth Circuit. So in the FCC small cell order, um, they said that um they they said an effective prohibition, we had been accustomed in the Ninth Circuit to dealing with a significant gap, least intrusive means analysis for small wa- for all wireless facilities. And the FCC looked at that, and that was a development in other uh circuits as well. The FCC looked at that and they they discarded it for small wireless facilities. They said an effective prohibition occurs when a local requirement materially inhibits their a a provider's ability to engage in any of a variety of activities related to uh wireless service, not only when filling a coverage gap, but also when densifying a wireless network, and that's like adding more facilities um to um reuse spectrum within a wireless network uh introducing new services, otherwise improving service capabilities. And they went on in their order uh to reject alternative readings that have been adopted in the courts. Uh, ones that have applied solely a coverage gap-based approach. Um, and they they did so saying that those were an outdated view of the marketplace. They said uh that that a coverage base, a coverage gap-based analytic approaches view wireless service as if it were a single monolithic offering provided only via traditional wireless towers. And that the current wi- wireless marketplace has a wide variety of offerings with different service characteristics and deployment strategies. And then they quote one of the participants, Crown Class Hall, uh explaining that there that in this current world where you're adding network capacity, taking advantage of new technologies, not plugging, not just plugging in gaps in network coverage, that a different sort of approach is required and that will accommodate increase in building use and and net and the deployment of small cells, small wireless facilities to ensure quality of service. Uh, so and then finally, the the last bullet there, we would, uh, this is the FCC in a footnote in their order saying that they reject both the version of the coverage gap test followed by the first, fourth, and seventh circuits and the version endorsed by the second, third, and ninth circuits. That's our circuit, the ninth. Post facilities are the least intrusive. Well, the FCC order, small cell order, I know this is tedious, but it went into some detail rejecting uh for small wireless facilities, um, the application of a significant gap least intrusive means test. So on the next slide, which may be even smaller, no, thank goodness. Um, this is what the court said because as I, as I mentioned, we represented a coalition, our firm, Joe Van Eaton, uh myself and others represented a coalition uh and were joined by many other communities um uh challenging this order. And at the Ninth Circuit, they rejected the challenge, the the arguments that we made um and the local government, other local government petitioners made against this change in the effective prohibition standard. So one thing that was argued was that applying this material inhibit standard was inconsistent with another Ninth Circuit decision that had said and if uh that to show an effective prohibition, you had to show an actual prohibition. And the court said that the Sprint case um endorsed the material inhibition standard as a method of determining whether it's been an effective prohibition. And they said that here, the FCC in coming up with these rules limiting local authority with respect to small wireless facilities had made factual findings on the basis of record before that certain municipal practices are materially inhibiting the deployment of five G services and that nothing more is required under Sprint. So that argument was dismissed by the court. The other argument that were that we made that was also dismissed, unfortunately, was that lo- local governments uh we we contended that without a reasoned explanation, the FCC had departed from its prior approach in California Payphone. And that California Payphone is the case that is the FCC order that establishes materially standard. And and we said that the FCC has made it much easier to show an effective prohibition. The court uh said that the material inhib- inhibition standard in California Payphone remains controlling and that the the differences in the FCC's new approach with respect to small cells um are reasonably explained by the differences in five G technology. are reasonably explained by the differences in 5G technology. So according to the court, the FCC has explained that it, that it applies a little differently in the context of 5G. Because state and local regulation, particularly with respect to fees and aesthetics, is more likely to have a prohibitory effect on 5G technology than it does on older technology. And they said, the reason for that is when you compare it to previous generations of 5, of wireless technology, 5G is different in that it requires rapid widespread deployment of more facilities. So, so again, the court rejected our opposition to the, the FCC order changing the standard for effective prohibition and said, no, they justified it because of 5G and that they basically upheld the order and the FCC's new standard. Next slide, please. Another area where there was some important activity and, and an important case decided was with respect to the FCC's in review and study of whether they should update their RF emissions standards. And in 2019, they, the FCC terminated an inquiry into possible updates that they had started in, I think it was in 2013. And groups, we were not involved in this appeal, but groups challenged the FCC's decision to terminate their inquiry. And they, and they were successful in that a majority of the DC Circuit Court of Appeals in 2021 held that the FCC's decision to end the inquiry was arbitrary and precious. And so there's some confusion about what that meant. So that I just wanted to explain that the court did not overturn the existing FCC guidelines or even comment on their merits. What they, and the court also did not order the FCC to change the guidelines. They said that they must provide a reasoned explanation for deciding no changes were warranted. So basically, they said, the FCC terminated its inquiry and didn't, didn't provide adequate explanation for why it was terminating its inquiry without making any changes. What that means practically speaking is that the existing FCC guidelines, though they are decades old, remain in effect. And the the matter is back in the FCC's hands to take action in response to this Circuit Court, DC Circuit Court of Appeals decision. Next slide, please. So this is what the majority stated specifically about the their decision and what it meant for the RF emissions guidelines. They say, to be clear, we take no position in the scientific debate regarding the health and environmental effects of RF radiation. We merely conclude that the commission's cursory analysis of material record evidence was insufficient as a matter of law. As a dissenting opinion, and there was a dissent that would have upheld the FCC's termination of the inquiry. They said, as the dissenting opinion indicates, there may be good reasons why the various studies in the record, only some of which have been cited here, do not warrant changes to the commission's guidelines. And the court, so the court was being very cautious to say, we know that it's the FCC's job as the expert agency to make these determinations. We judge whether they justify their determinations as a matter of administrative law and that they did not adequately justify the decision or provide a reasoned explanation for the decision that they made and then sending it back to the FCC to do for further work. That they were not themselves commenting on whether any changes should be made or not made. Next slide, please. I had mentioned earlier that there are some categories of wireless facility modifications that must be approved at the local level. And that was as a result of a law we sometimes call section 6409 of the Spectrum Act that was adopted in 2012 and basically directed the FCC to come up with more specific rules. So in 2014, the FCC adopted an implementing order that set the detailed parameters for eligible facilities requests. So what criteria had to be met in order to qualify for an application that local government must approve. Those parameters were set in 2014. In 2020, the FCC took two actions, two different orders. One where they made clarifications to the initial rules. So they provided their interpretation of what they meant in response to some uncertainties expressed by the industry. And also there was what we call an expansions order where they actually went through a rulemaking process and modified some of the rules just with respect to macro site. So it expanded the definition of the site to, it used to be the definition of a macro site was limited to the current leased area. And under these changes now, it's the current leased area plus 30 feet in any direction. So the clarifications order had a very important clarification that made stealth, requiring stealth facilities more important. One of the things that will kick an application out of the box of being absolutely, you know, local government, you have no discretion, you must approve it, is if the modification that's being proposed to that existing wireless facility would defeat the concealment elements, that's the language. Now, some types of concealment are, involve things like putting a facility among a stand of trees. So it's hidden by the trees or put on a rooftop, but near sort of back away from the front of the streets or it can't be seen. Those types of concealment, the FCC basically sort of discarded as valid concealment for these purposes. They said, those are aesthetic regulations, but what they mean by concealment is really that the facility itself is the concealment. So if it looks like a tree, then it is a concealed facility. Not if it's hidden in the trees, but it's not otherwise concealed. So it means that stealth, requiring stealth facilities becomes more important in order to prevent or to help limit the opportunities for an applicant to claim that they qualify as an eligible facilities request that you have no discretion at the local level to deny. Next slide, please. So I'm going to just run through now just a few random California cases. Well, not totally random, but ones that might be of interest that have happened in the last few years to see, give you a sense of the litigation that's going on out there. So T-Mobile, see the city of San Francisco, they seem to like seeing the city of San Francisco. They also see them about Public Utility Code 7901. This one was actually about eligible facilities requests. So those are those applications that must be approved and have a deemed granted remedy, not at the state level, but at the federal level in the FCC regulations. So T-Mobile, see the city because they wanted their permits to be issued because the city had missed the shot clock. And they claimed that they should be deemed approved and they wanted the city to actually issue permits. And so they went to court to get, to ask for that. And the court actually decide, determined that the city is not required to issue permits. They don't have to actually issue permits, but they do have to, they are barred if you, if they qualified as an eligible facilities request and the deemed granted remedy. The city would be barred from imposing any penalties or preventing mobile from proceeding with its installations. But it, it doesn't have to actually issue a permit. So that was one case that I thought was interesting, you might want to be aware of. The next slide. This is a case in the city of Malibu. And it also involves an eligible facilities request. And here the dispute really was more about whether the city had acted or not. The city believed it had acted because a staff, a city staff member had written to Verizon multiple times saying your application doesn't qualify as an eligible facilities request. We think it's a colocation request and you need to submit these additional materials so we can process it under, under that framework. That went on for some time and finally Verizon sued the city and said that the application should have been deemed granted. There are other issues involved as well. But ultimately, the court decided that the staff member had acted on the application and, and that Verizon had failed to pursue the court remedy that it had within 30 days so that the court action was untimely. And that, that particular case is on appeal to the Ninth Circuit. Another, this is your neighboring city and, and I have to say, I've worked on, represented the, I am doing work for and advising the city of Carmel and represented them in this litigation. This was an application for a wireless facility on a wood pole. Denied by the planning commission, Verizon appealed and the city council also denied the application. Verizon sued, but they didn't challenge the merits of the denial. Instead, they claimed that the city had failed to act. And they, their claim was that, as I mentioned earlier, denial must be in writing. And they claimed that under the requirement in, in federal law that it be in writing, that it also requires an issued written denial to be delivered to the applicant. So they claimed that they should be entitled to approval under an agreement that they had with the, with the city that related to these applications. So it was under a settlement agreement that they would have a deemed grant. It was not invoking state law. The court rejected Verizon's arguments, held the city timely acted by making a final decision available before the deadline, the shot clock deadline. And that there was no delivery requirement in federal law. And Verizon has also appealed this decision to the Ninth Circuit. And finally, I was asked to provide a brief update or summary of this Western, it's a, not a telecommunications case, but an administrative law case was in the news quite a bit. West Virginia versus the EPA. And this is the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court decision that reminds us of the major questions doctrine that puts limits on judicial deference to federal agency rulemaking authority. So in this case, the EPA had attempted to regulate carbon dioxide emissions from existing coal and natural gas fire power plants under its existing statutory authority. Those regulations were challenged. And the challenge was successful in that the court found that for major questions, and these are things that go beyond just interpreting your existing statutory framework. If they're under the major questions doctrine, administrative agencies must be able to point to a clear congressional authorization when they claim the power to make decisions that are of, quote, vast economic and political significance. So the, under the major questions doctrine, it's basically a separation of powers between, you know, when the legislature can act to adopt rules or adopt the law on a topic. And when an agency can interpret their existing statutory authority and framework to address that same or to address a, a topic that is new, as we're always facing, especially in telecommunications and other industries as well. Changes in technology and market practices and everything are always kind of ahead of changes in the law. The laws I was talking about earlier, the federal level were mostly adopted in 1996. So there've been a lot of changes in the world since 1996. So this is a reminder that the major questions doctrine has put limits on the deference that courts will give to federal agencies in their rulemaking authority. And I believe that's my last slide. Thank you for listening. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'll turn it back to to the chair.
Thank you, Gail. Commissioners, any questions for Gail on her legal brief?
Yeah.
Steven?
A question I have is would the city be able to exercise its police power to ban 5G poles in residential areas that were high risk of fire and unable to get fire insurance?
So high risk of fire, unable to get fire insurance. I, I think there's a lot packed into that question.
Starting with global warming, we have problems with fires in California. You know, and the police power is something that we don't give up supposedly. So I'm wondering, you know, if we're schools, near schools and homes where there's no fire insurance available. I was just at lunch today chatting with fellow Rotarians and four out of the five people at the table had had their fire insurance castles because they live in high risk areas with fire problems. And so I'm wondering, you know, why can't we do that as a way of regulating 5G poles in areas where there's a high risk of fire and there's no compensation, fire insurance?
Well, first, I, I think there's a lot to unpack there. I would start by just saying.
Expect you to answer this.
Right. Let me just, let me just give you some parameters that I think are important to recognize. When I, I mentioned in my presentation that your, your police power authority over public utilities remain subject to a way where you may have been preempted by the California Public Utilities Commission. And in one area that the Public Utilities Commission has been very active is in setting out what are safe safety requirements for installation of communications and power infrastructure. And there are numerous, very lengthy general orders issued by the California Public Utilities Commission that address in a lot of detail what, what is a safe structure, right? What is a safe utility pool?
They're probably.
Power lines and all of that.
And they're probably locally updated. Because they haven't taken into account global warming, haven't taken into account the fire danger, the hundreds and thousands of acres that are burning in California every year. And we're ceding away the protection of our members and citizens because of something that the Public Utilities Commission has ruled? I don't think so, but that's okay. That's, I'm off my soapbox. Thank you. You don't have to answer that. Because I know that.
I'm not here to defend the California Public Utilities Commission. So I don't even, you know, I wasn't going to go there.
Thank you for. Thank you for-
I was just talking about the, the kind of division of legal authority and, and what is their scope of this authority.
And we won't discuss the Ninth Circuit.
Thank you, Steven. Commissioners, anyone else?
I have some questions.
Terry?
Yeah. So thanks for your presentation. So, you know, I'm very interested in the city of Carmel's experience, especially because you were there. So when they, when the city council denied Verizon, it's Verizon, right?
That's correct.
When the city council in Carmel denied Verizon's application, were you working with them at that point?
Yes, I had started working with them when it went to the city council appeal. Yeah.
Okay. So did they deny it against your advice?
I am not-
She's able to answer.
To speak about attorney-client privilege.
Right.
Okay. Well, I certainly don't want to get you in trouble, but it's-
Right. And really, because we have such a big work scope ahead of us, our intent in having Gail Carish give you that overview is so that you look at the draft ordinance through the lens of what is and is not allowable under the legal parameters that she just described in great detail as opposed to analyzing maybe other cities' applications and things like that that aren't really before this commission tonight. So.
Yeah, just a few more questions. Thank you, though. I understand. You know, just, you know, if you can't answer it because it's a conflict of interest to say so. So another question was-
It's not a conflict of interest. That's attorney-client privileged. Her client is the city of Carmel, so she cannot reveal that confidential legal advice to our city council or to the planning commissioner, anyone else?
What has been published? Did this, because it was, you know, everybody expected that Carmel case to be, you know, the, the court stuff to happen on merit, but instead it's sort of a technicality that, that it got sidetracked on. But the, so did the denial of the court for, you know, in Carmel's favor, did that influence what we're doing with our ordinance at all? You know, how we, how we handle notifications, basically?
No, I, I, you have in your ordinance, as I recall in your draft, there, you have a requirement that notice of the decision be sent. So Carmel did not, did not have that and they, you know, Verizon attended the hearing and all of that. There was kind of no question, at least in the city's mind, that, that city had acted, everyone knew they had acted. It was really a technical argument Verizon made about a delivery requirement under federal law.
Okay.
That was unsuccessful.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
But he is on appeal, so.
Yeah. When do you expect it to get to the Ninth Circuit?
I, I can't really say. I mean, that was just filed. It could go to the Ninth Circuit in the fall. It could, could take longer than that. I don't know how long a decision would take.
But again, that, that case is litigating a process and a notification. It's not litigating the merits. And so it really has no application to what we're doing tonight. We do have notice provisions in our code that we need to comply with. And, and that's what you can look at if you want to keep those or not, but those are applicable to all our use permits.
Okay.
And so maybe we can get to that section when we get there.
So one last question is the, so let's say a, a city is playing strong and they want to deny an application. When they, if the courts rule against the city ultimately, then they have to pay the court costs of the applicant, correct?
The, the court costs, but not attorney's fees under, I think it's House Federal Districts and Abrams, you know, Abrams and I'm trying to remember. There, there are cases that a law that I decided that challenged like three thirty-two, section three thirty-two is the section I was talking about where challenges usually come up. They do not allow for, or any of these regulatory decisions are allowed for attorney's fees.
Or damages either.
Or damages, correct.
But it doesn't include, though, paying outside council costs for defense or in-house council fees. So there are costs incurred in connection with these.
These, you pay your own. Each side, it's like any other litigation, you pay your own. Yeah.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mike Dawson, you have questions?
Terry asked the exact question I was going to ask. Sorry.
All right. Anyone else? Mike Brassfield, questions?
I like to comment on litigation. Looking at the letters from McKenzie and Albritton, who represent Verizon, they're going to sue us unless we let them write the ordinance. That's my take on that. So I think it's inevitable. No matter what we do, we're going to get sued. So I wouldn't even consider that.
If I could suggest that we're doing our best to rec- have the planning commission recommend the lawful ordinance. And we have to do that, of course, weighing some risks and challenges, but all we can do is give our best legal advice. You know, Gail is an expert in this field. She litigated the Portland case. She's litigated many of these cases. And so her sound advice is extremely reliable. And so our job as attorneys is to do our best to make sure that we've addressed as many of the risks and put forward what's lawful within the parameters of the policy direction given by the planning commission and ultimately the city council and before that the, the wireless subcommittee. So while we appreciate all these concerns, we've, we've tried to address those as best as we can through the lens of the wireless subcommittee's draft. You know, this is, this is their draft and we've done some edits to it. Anyway, that's, hopefully that's helpful.
I would just add that it's not uncommon in these, you know, process of updating wireless ordinances, you know, that all interested parties have comments and ask for things and no one walks away completely happy. But it often, it doesn't always lead to litigation. No promise. I can make no promises about what will happen, you know, in your city, but, but I, I have worked with a lot of cities. It's not uncommon to see letters from Verizon or AT&amp;T or Castle or others that are stakeholders. Public comments doesn't, doesn't, not every time does it end up in litigation. So I would just bear that in mind as well. And I, and I agree with everything that Ms. Davy said about, you know, our attempt to give the best advice we can to steer you on a path that won't lead to litigation, but, but get, you know, but achieves as much as possible what you want to achieve within the parameters of existing state and federal law.
I have a question. This is a real practical question because when Kim went through the chronology of the development of wireless communication services up to the point where Verizon wanted to put the thirteen cellphone towers in Monver Vista neighborhood and that failed. Since then, we've had a lot of improvements to existing wireless facilities that utilize the term colocation. Colocation meaning that we add AT&amp;T, we add T-Mobile, we add Sprint. But because these improvements are in commercial or remote locations such as Ryan Ranch or the top of the Marriott Hotel, we don't really see the impact of the colocation except that we see added white cylinders on a basic stem every time one of these applications comes through. And not to suppose the neighborhood's worst fears, but in all practicality, if a wireless company such as Verizon puts one of these three-foot white bobs on a utility pole on via Parizo and then AT&amp;T says, oh yeah, I want one of those too. And so they co-locate. Does that mean that there will just be added white bobs on the utility pole? Or will it use the same white bulb? It's just a practical question.
Right. No, and it's a good question because colocation is often preferred, right? Locate, you know, cities don't want, you know, new sites. They want, you know, maximize the use of existing sites, but particularly with sites in the public right-of-way that are on utility poles, on streetlights, there are some practical and just safety limitations. So I mentioned that the California Public Utilities Commission has a number of general orders that deal with what it, what's a safe installation of wireless facilities, electric facilities, communications facilities. And, you know, the wind loading and structural and other requirements to ensure that utility poles are safe. So it may be that the, the regulations, those sorts of regulations will place a limit on the growth of, of installations on utility poles. That's different than if they're outside the public right-of-way, say on a monopole, you know, in a, you know, on a private property that, that had, you know, can be taller and support more. That will place some limits. There will be some other limitations, maybe due to interference because they will be able to have the separation between the facilities and not only the antennas and other antennas, but also the antennas and the power lines to safely operate. So that may also place some limits on the growth on utility poles.
So if I can, I think this is a really important point and was a key decision. But I think it was actually a split vote, if I remember, at the subcommittee level. We had one of our subcommittee members recommend that the new wireless facility should be on a freestanding pole separate from our utility poles or our light poles. So if you have a row of electric poles on one side, the subcommittee considered to create an aesthetic standard to have a freestanding pole on the other side with the wireless facility. And the subcommittee, their vote and what's in this ordinance is, you know, our ordinance places, if it's going to be a small facility, a small cell facility, the goal is to have it on an existing pole, an existing location. And so there was a concern about the proliferation of poles, more so than, you know, maybe having a smaller pole because you wouldn't have the electrical wires and all of that to the side with the radon on top in a separate pole. So there is a built-in aesthetic decision in this ordinance that for small cell facilities basically says, you know, if you read all the guidelines, put them on the existing poles and make them as small as you can. You know, make the conduit as close to the pole, make the boxes as small as you can. But that was a really interesting discussion and I think the conclusion of the subcommittee was is they didn't want to see another pole installed, maybe in front of somebody's yard across the way that doesn't currently have a pole. That was considered more objectionable than maybe the pole getting slightly taller, an existing pole getting slightly taller with additional equipment on it.
Right. You know, it's just a matter of practicality. When they put in the cellphone tower pole at the Hyatt Hotel or at the Del Monte Shopping Center, it looks like a flagpole, but it's not really. And many service providers are using it and the white bombs on either, on all of it, they're not there. It just looks like a flagpole. So it is reasonable to think that, and another pole that was co-located, that it's all the equipment is held within the single pole would stop this, I don't know, Christmas tree effect. Any providers using the same utility pole.
And it's important to remember this next wave of wireless facilities is not really going to look like the building-mounted facilities. I mean, those will still happen.
Okay.
But the densification, as I understand it, will be through the personal, you know, the small cells. And if you're down in the Canary Row area, perhaps you're going to see on the existing utility poles, there will be proposals, I'm sure, from carriers to densify that area and, and to install them on existing poles. So I just want to be clear, the existing goal in the ordinance is to put them on existing poles.
Okay. I apologize for the elementary nature of my question. With so many erudite and difficult to comprehend legal issues, this was just a practical question.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. Mike Brassfield, did you raise your hand earlier?
Yes, I did. I'm really glad to listen to the commissioner's comments. We are being overcome. And I'm, I'm trying to sort out the best to navigate this issue. If four G has more power on its transmitter, I understand, than five G. But when you start stacking the multiple five G, you eventually become, it becomes more power than the four G in, in one area. And I look at, that was one of the reasons why I asked if the West Virginia versus EPA applies here, because this is constantly evolving. And I'm stuck. The, the US government in this previous spending bill put billions of dollars into cell towers. And so we're, we're not just fighting the FCC here, we're fighting the plans of a, a bigger entity. Then I look at, okay, if when I read the original context of this ninety-six bill and it talked about the effective prohibition, that was intended by Congress and put in the bill. But there are so many things now that were not even considered back in ninety-six and it has evolved. And so now we're stacking BBs here because we don't know how the effect of our ordinance is going to affect our citizens. When you look at what happened with cigarettes, for years they said, prove that it's harmful. Well, we see indications that it's harmful and I actually, I see a discriminatory process. The VA now allows GIs to file for disability claim from the power from cell. But a common citizen cannot. It doesn't make sense. When our local representative was asking a question about this, he says it's the FCC, but we can't do anything about it. Well, that's not true. He could hold hearings. He could attach financial, negative financial issues, but it seems that we're, we're fighting City Hall. No respect, disrespect to our city hall. But we're fighting our own government here and it's, we're stuck. So when I start looking at those things, I, how can we get through this sorting process? When earlier you talked about the subjectivity on locations, can we, within the, these decisions, be a little bit more suggestive or subjective in our placement? Like it cannot be adjacent to a residence. It cannot be adjacent to a school. Can we ask those questions or put those in the ordinance so that we cannot, so that they cannot be built in that regard?
Gail, do you want to take a stab at that?
Sure. So I'll say two things. One, what, what the, the law says, as, as you seem pretty well aware, the, and I mentioned in my presentation, so the Federal Communications Commission has a, is the only agency that has an authority to establish what are safe RF emission standards, right? Standards for exposure to RF emissions. They have established those standards. They were looking at considering whether they should be updating them and they terminated that inquiry. And the, the court found that they did not provide a reasoned decision for, for terminating- And the, the court found that they did not provide a reasoned decision for, for terminating that inquiry. And so basically, it was sent back to them. That order terminating the inquiry was, you know, uh, canceled basically by the court decision, but it put it back in their hands and still with the existing standards. What can you do at a local level? You can ensure uh, that there is compliance with those existing uh, FCC guidelines. And uh, and uh, there are, you can't otherwise consider RF emissions in your standards for um, deployment. So yeah, there was a case, I believe it was the city of Carlsbad, and I'm blanking on the year, where they had uh, were uh, a decision based on a consideration of RF emissions, concern about RF emissions, where the carrier had shown that they were meeting the FCC standards. Um, they um, nonetheless wanted to deny the application, and they were sued, and they uh, the applicant was successful. So you have to be cautious about, um, at the same time, the FCC has recognized, even in the small cell order, that you can have separation requirements and and setback requirements, things like that. They will be judged, they should be based on aesthetic considerations and will be will be, be judged under the FCC order that they are reasonable uh, and published in advance. So um, that said, I um, have seen cities sometimes do adopt in their regulations some uh, uh, setback requirements, like distance from schools, homes. Um, and sometimes those get challenged by uh, the wireless industry because they determine that uh, usually when wireless uh, applicants look at the cumulative impact of your, all of your regulation, and, and if there's a determination where they do their analysis and say, there's nowhere where we can cite now, um, you may well have a, a challenge to your ordinance, or it may come in an individual application. Uh, and then sometimes they aren't challenged, and to the extent that they can be complied with, they comply, but if they can't comply because the carrier needs to put a facility that wouldn't, that would violate that uh, setback requirement, then you may see applications requiring, that are asking for exceptions or waivers of that requirement in that circumstance. So you are not, as a local government, allowed to regulate based on concerns about RF emissions, other than to ensure that the carrier is in their application demonstrating that they are complying with existing standards set by the FCC, but I have uh, seen um, those sorts of requirements, setbacks from certain sensitive locations that, that, you know, sometimes are um, uh, uh, yeah, put in, in uh, codes and uh, may have aesthetic concerns, may have some, um, I don't know, roadway safety concerns, things like that. I don't always know what is, what is the basis for them, but they're not always challenged. Sometimes they are. Sorry, that's kind of a long answer, but, but that's just my experience of what I've seen.
Okay, I have another que- question in that regard. Based on that experience, and based on the fact that a lot of these regulations were originally written in ninety-six, and the FCC has changed their interpretation of them on multiple occasions since then, is there been any discussion among attorneys, particularly that your coalition's regarding a filing in regards to the West Virginia versus EPA?
Uh, I, I, that, I haven't, I mean, that uh, coalition that we talked about was uh, sort of ended with the Supreme Court uh, dis- uh, denying a cert petition back in twenty twenty-one. But I, I, I will say, you know, I, uh, myself and colleagues looking at those sorts of decisions are always interested because they do have general application administrative uh, law for other federal agencies. Um, if you, if you're thinking of whether the small cell order could be challenged, uh, uh, again, I, 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 I'm afraid that ship has sailed. Uh, and there wouldn't be a basis for challenging the order a second time, but certainly that it, that made your questions, Doctor, will be an important consideration in, in any challenges that we may consider of future FCC orders. I mean, it wa- it, it's, it is a part of what, what is um, you know, a part of the body of administrative law that we would look at in any challenge to a future FCC action.
Thank you. Uh, regarding the number of transmitters, has there been any push to limit the number within a certain geographic area?
Pushed by?
Pushed by anybody. I mean, it, when we talked about that, well, I talked about that 5G is less power than 4G transmitters, but the accumulative effect of hypothetically, you mentioned ten on a pole, but would be more power, and it's not health issues, although I think it might be a health trust issue, but I'm just saying is, can we effectively say, we're not objecting to cell towers, but we're objecting to the number of them in, like on Canary Row? In this closely packed, dense area, can we limit them at all?
Uh, d- d- not, not in such a direct sort of generic way. I mean, you can, um, it, the problem of, w- or one of the challenges in doing that is that each carrier is allowed to build their own network. And so when you're doing that effective prohibition analysis, it's, it applies to each carrier's network. Like, they each have a right to build out a network.
To clarify, it's not so much a carrier, but it's individual contractors that build them for carriers.
Right. But the, but the analysis that is done, the effective prohibition analysis that is done is with respect to the wireless network. You have in your draft ordinance that there can be no speculative um, installation. So um, there's always going to be a wireless carrier that wants to use the facility um, that's being proposed. But, but to your point about uh, limiting the numbers, um, again, subject to the fact that each carrier is a builder of their network, and they always would have an opportunity to say, you know, we have to go on Canary Row, or that's going to, you know, create an effective prohibition. Uh, you can, you know, uh, i- issues like um, having separation requirements might be one way to, to, you know, ensure that they're sort of spread out.
Of this con- constant poll after poll with cell towers?
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to move on now. We, we've been at this for an hour and a half, and I'd certainly like to get the public um, comment. If there's no other questions from commissioners or questions that can wait. Okay, great. Um.
Dan?
Yes.
Are we on the presentation by staff where I could make comments on typos?
I think when we go through, when we, after public testimony, when we start going, that will be our opportunity to do that, Stephen.
And thank you to uh, to Chrissy for as, getting my questions answered regarding the legal status of the Carmel case.
Uh, J- Jennifer, just a couple of housekeeping questions. Uh, how many people do we have in our Zoom waiting room? Or is there anybody there?
There are six attendees currently.
Okay.
Um.
And what I'd like to do is leave it to your discretion of how to blend them in with the comments that we're taking from the chambers tonight.
I have a hand already raised. Someone heard you.
Okay, and if you could repeat the
Definitely. Um, members of the public are encouraged to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com slash City of Monterey with a ten second delay and Comcast Channel twenty-five with up to a ninety second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iserchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll-free. Once again, that phone number to call is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Then enter the webinar ID one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide public comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. And just a reminder, there is a three minute time limit. Um, thank you for creating a line that helps, I think. Um, and first, I did see a hand raised as soon as you announced public comments, so I will announce them first. The last three phone number digits are nine four one. And let me just set up the timer. You should be able to unmute. Last three digits, nine four one.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is Christie Hollandbeck. I do not believe that the ordinance staff has drafted is strong enough to protect Monterey from cell tower proliferation. If you truly want to protect this beautiful community, I urge you to hire top telecom attorney Andrew Campanelli to write your ordinance. I send you all a PDF of a book called Captured Agency. The author, Norm Ulster, a Harvard ethics professor, um, wrote the book, and he says, and I quote, "The term captured agency is a term that comes up time and time again with the FCC." Captured agencies are essentially controlled by industries they are supposed to regulate. A detailed look at the FCC's actions and non-actions show that over the years, the FCC has granted the wireless industry pretty much what it has wanted. Money and lots of it has played a part. As a result, consumer safety, health, privacy, along with consumer wallets have all been overlooked, sacrificed, or raided due to unchecked industry influence. According to top telecom attorney Andrew Campanelli, when Congress enacted the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, it explicitly preserved to the state and local governments the general authority to regulate the placement of wireless facilities in their jurisdictions. He says district courts are bound by superior decisions of circuit courts. According to the Second Circuit Court, it's not up to the FCC to put words in the Telecommunications Act to say something it does not say. Mr. Campanelli says nine of thirteen circuit courts have ruled on this issue. That is what is binding in district courts. There is twenty-four years of precedent. It's supposed to be a balancing between carriers' needs and local governments' needs. City of Portland Ninth Circuit did not directly address prohibition. Wireless carriers must prove significant gap in services, and the proposed site is the least intrusive means. Brown Castle versus the City of Hempstead, they said, "We don't have to ask the FCC. We are a district court and we are bound by the Second Circuit." Second Circuit has already determined what effective prohibition means. FCC has no power to come in with a new interpretation. Contrary to advice you're being given, your hands are not tied. As planning commissioners, you are the gatekeepers of your community. You have the ability to control local sightings, placement, construction, and maintenance of wireless facilities. You have tremendous power, and you must learn to use it. You need to know what to demand and how to demand so that you stay in control. Mr. Campanelli can show you how. Monterey deserves a strong ordinance, and it is up to all of you to protect your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to council chambers.
So Ms. Jed, I think you're being offered.
Okay.
Yes.
If you're first in line, can you please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so?
Do I need to wear my mask to speak, or?
That is preferred for public safety? Oh.
We'll reset.
Okay, thank you for touching that.
Thank you. My name is Gina Jed. I'm a Monterey resident. We have a very confusing situation. This is how the residents view this confusion. Residents do not want wireless cell communication facilities in residential communities. Let me repeat that. Residents do not want wireless cell communication facilities in residential communities. In our opinion, the best way to ensure this objective is to achieve an ironclad wireless ordinance. The city council requested, quote, "The strongest wireless ordinance legally possible in two thousand and eighteen" when it appointed the subcommittee to draft a wireless ordinance. The subcommittee did its duty, but now its work is outdated. Fast forward to two thousand twenty-two, the city of Monterey to this day does not have the strongest wireless ordinance legally possible. What staff is presenting tonight is even weaker than what we already had. Staff invited a group of concerned residents to submit rec- recommendations, which we did, and then completely ignored our re- our recommendations. We residents, staff, elected officials, and appointed commission, commissioners like you yourselves now have available to, to all of us tons of case law and legal rulings that conclude municipalities can indeed codify protections against telecom intrusion into residential communities without fear of lawsuits. So, do you see how perplexed and confused we residents are? The city hall want a strong wireless ordinance? If so, city hall is not acting like it wants a strong wireless ordinance. We can cut through the confusion and this botched boondoggle and protected, protracted project, and in short order, get to the strongest wireless ordinance possible by hiring one of several attorneys who specialize in writing such ordinances in California. That would not be BB and K. It would cost as little as six thousand dollars to do this. It is really that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
This is hard, talking with this. Um, good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Pat Benz, a resident of Monterey. I am very confused about the direction of the wireless commun- um, communications ordinance. Um, after the rewrite, it has been hard to even see the original draft. What you were presented with at the last meeting, we went back and gave lots of comments of which now what's before you tonight shows absolutely no response to those, not even definitions that we felt would have been helpful for the general public to understand some of the wording. Um, I guess it would help if we at least got comments or remarks to our MVNA comments to see the direction they're going. One of the points that I find most concerning is the drive test data and maps. The FCC says that um, propagation maps are only sixteen to sixty-four percent accurate. And because of that, it says the drive test data and maps are the only um, requirement that it should be sufficient uh, to prove that there's a sufficient gap. Um, and that for me is the number one requirement um, in an application is, is there a, a gap? And if there is no gap, then a new facility is not needed and can be denied. I know Gail kind of shot some of that down, but it's still the premise that do we really need it? And give us the real proof that, that you need it. Um, the second one The second one that you all requested and we requested was about a mock-up. And I gave out some pictures from the mock-up that we did when we came before you for the 13 cell towers. We're not asking for big fancy stuff, but a mock-up would be helpful. A visual is necessary. After the planning commission denials, the small cell facilities of the small cell facilities, the city council came back with a twofold directive to the planning commission. And that was to make the strongest legally possible wireless communication ordinance, and that it would be done by a subcommittee with the support of staff or legal counsel. I don't feel tonight that you're actually seeing the strongest directive possible, especially since we can't see or haven't seen anything of what we made in suggestions. I hope you ask the tough questions, and we hope to hear those answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, I do have a couple hands raised. So since the chair wanted to alternate between the public that's here and online, I want to give the next person online a chance to speak. So Barbara Moore, now is your chance. Please unmute and provide your comments.
Yes, this is Barbara Moore. I live in Monterey. And I used to work for the state legislature, and I was a senior legislative policy staff person. And one of the things I did was write legislation, present analyses to committees. And one of the things that troubles me about where we are now is something that has basically been studied by the previous two speakers, which is, it's my understanding that the wireless subcommittee made substantial recommendations, and that the proposed ordinance differs from that in a number of significant ways. And also, as has been mentioned, that the directive from the city council was the strongest ordinance possible. In my duties as a legislative staff person, what I would expect and what I think seems would be very helpful to the public and to the commission is for staff to go through the subcommittee recommendations and where the proposed ordinance differs from that, to explain why. I think without that kind of a staff analysis and report, both the commission and the public is really left not understanding why the subcommittee that was formed in direction of the city council, why their recommendations have not been followed to a greater extent. So I think that's really a big missing piece of this puzzle. So I'm not surprised people are confused. One of the things I also understand is that the proposed ordinance changes the notification provisions that were required by the, proposed by the subcommittee regarding when there are applications. And that now the staff has given itself a direction as to when and if and how long the notice would be, whereas the subcommittee recommendations, if I understand it, were very specific. As someone that believes in transparency, as I think more and more government employees and elected officials and appointed officials are trying to do, that's a very troubling aspect of what I understand the draft ordinance is. So I would request the commission, direct the staff to go back to work with the people who were on the subcommittee, since it's been dissolved, and to basically provide an analysis of specifically why the recommendations have not been followed and to explain that. I think both you and the public will be much better served by that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go back to council members.
Thank you. Just please let me restart the timer. Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Marty Kraftcheck, and I'm a lifelong resident of Monterey. I'm here today to urge you not to recommend the wireless ordinance that has been presented to the planning commission. We need the strongest language possible in a wireless ordinance in order to deter proliferation of cell towers in the residential areas of Monterey and near schools. The ordinance presented to you is not legally strong enough to protect the health and safety of all residents. I encourage you to recommend that the city council hire a respected and trusted telecom attorney to write this ordinance for Monterey. Our Monterey Vista neighborhood came out in force the last time the telecom industry tried to put 13 small cell towers in our residential neighborhood. And I would expect you to see the same pushback now if the language for this ordinance is not strengthened. I submitted a comment letter on this issue with more comments, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
We can take, Susan, if you'd like to provide comments. There's only two more hands raised online.
Let's go ahead with Susan's comments.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I will right now.
Hi, Susan Nine, a former member of the ordinance committee. I would like to correct a little history. The applications were not just for Monterey Vista neighborhood. Some of the applications included Old Town neighborhood. Going back in time, the same staff that is working on this ordinance recommended approval of residential cell towers when the Ninth Circuit standards were, in effect, fully very different from the FCC rulings. They ignored 800 pages of public input, including testimony of Verizon customers in the area to be served that enjoyed reliable service throughout the neighborhood. They ignored a drive-by test that showed 100% connectivity. And by recommending approval, had you not saved the day, the planning commission, just one approval, and that final cell tower was, did come with a recommendation from staff to approve, it would have set the precedent for all. Monterey neighborhoods would have to also be subject to residential cell towers, and maybe soon in the future. I'd like to say that I appreciate Gail's analysis, and I'm sure she's probably right on, but it differs from what we're hearing from other attorney experts. I followed the case very closely in Carmel, where Verizon did have to present a least intrusive alternative analysis. And this is very recently, certainly post-Post Portland. They also had to prove a coverage gap. They did not appeal it on the merits when they were denied. If that is the current law, surely they know it. And why didn't they just take it to court and say, "You're not following what the Ninth Circuit said to do"? So I would like to see us have a town hall or something for the residents and the planning staff and iron out these confusions. Because right now, I've heard expert attorneys in telecom law say they don't have a clue what material inhibition means. They don't know what proof that requires. They don't know what evidence the court will accept to put in. And they certainly don't know what to put in ordinances if that's the true state of the law as far as what these cities can require to establish whether, in fact, that rises to a level where you're forced to approve them based on an effective prohibition analysis. So I don't see how this community can understand this. I don't, if the telecom lawyers don't even understand it. I would like to say, being on the committee, what you got in April was not what the committee did. It was a supplement with so many crossouts and additions. I don't, I don't, it doesn't even resemble it in some key areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, next I will take the next person who's raising their hand online, which is an individual with the last three phone number digits 902. Reminder, you can press star six to unmute.
This is Nina Beatty. Staff has not provided you with a copy of the current ordinance. I really don't have any idea what the thing in the resolution or the cross-out version is or where it comes from. It's not the current ordinance adopted in November of 2018, which makes it impossible for you or the public to see what changes staff has proposed. I also noticed that ADA section was missing, formerly A2A, but staff didn't disclose this. And so what else is missing that they have not disclosed is missing from the, in their revision. And that is regarding Americans with Disabilities Act. Staff has also not provided you with a redline version of whatever work product this is, nor have they done it in the past. So it's very difficult for you to see where we've come from and where we're going. The same staff, as Ms. Nine mentioned, is the staff that approved, voted for approval or recommended approval of a cell tower in front of my house and in the front of the house of another person disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity, and has also conducted hearings with significant irregularities. This is their very confusing work product. And I request that you oppose this version that's presented to you as against the public's interest in evading state and federal laws. And also, I request, if you're going to continue with this, that this ordinance be tabled until staff can provide you an actual redline version, which I would be happy to provide the city what that looks like. The state legislature does these all the time, and they're very easy to read, but somehow staff needs to go back to school on this. I'm very troubled by the lack of mention of TCA Section 601(c)(1) and 47 USC 414 that affirm other local, state, and federal laws and remedies and narrow TCA's preemption ability that an ordinary person such as myself, who's not an attorney, can easily see. You do not, you have policing powers, and you can make decisions, and decisions are not regulations. You have, the T-Mobile lawsuit was amply full of that. How are you planning to address fair housing and ADA and state anti-discrimination laws so that I and others like me have access to my house, the public right of way, and essential services? How are you going to do that? The TCA, you have to go back to Congress's intent. And their first priority, that Congress said way back in the beginning in 47 USC 332(a)(1) was to promote the safety of life and property. That's the first priority they listed. That's their intent. And so when you go to individual situations like mine, like my neighbor, who the city staff recommended approving a cell tower in front of, who's also disabled, you have exceptions to the overall rule where these need to be. ADA has not been preempted by TCA. Fair housing has not been preempted by ADA and by the Telecommunications Act. And the TCA says that. Unless it's specifically mentioned in the TCA, there's no preemption. Those remedies still stand. And I'm just hearing silence from the people that are, you're listening to about these rules. It all seems extremely slanted, as it has been in the past, towards allowing more and more and more and more. Can you imagine what all those companies that would like to have wireless facilities on Cannery Row, what Cannery Row will look like? And whether anyone will come? It could kill tourism on Cannery Row.
Ms. Beatty.
I'm most concerned about my rights and my civil rights and the anti-discrimination laws that are in place that the TCA does not overturn.
Thank you. Thank you, Nina.
Back to the chambers, next. Do you want to come in? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ray Myers. I live in Monterey. In 1996, you know now from Gail's presentation, the FCC adopted a new and updated Office of Engineering Technology bulletin that evaluated the FCC compliance for health, human exposure, radio, electromagnetic fields. It replaces another bulletin, which was done in 1985. These standards are based on technology that has long moved on. In 1996, you recall, we had flip phones. We used pagers. It was pre-Blackberry, and iPhone was 11 years away still. So despite this revolution we've had since then, that 1996 bulletin is still the standard that we use today. Although, was mentioned also earlier, that 2021 lawsuit, the U.S. Court of Appeals of the D.C. Circuit concluded, and I quote, "Failed to provide a reasoned explanation for determination that the guidelines adequately protect against harmful effects of exposure to radio frequency radiation." So the court made the FCC go back and answer the multitude of evidence that was presented to them since then. They just basically said, "Here's all this stuff. We're not going to even comment about it. We're just going to say it's safe." That's what that court case represents today. So we have to look at now a 25-year-old dated safety standard. In the meantime, your wireless ordinance now has to protect this as strongly as possible. We must mandate every requirement for the EMF safety be included to protect the general public. I have a few considerations for you. The applications, for example, need to provide methods of evaluation so we can determine if they are safe within the standards that we have. Radio and antenna models with specific requirements to validate the safety. The ordinance should also require models that are presented by the radio engineers to graphically show and predict in a two-dimensional or three-dimensional way the radiation pattern so that you can see the elevations of the structures and the patterns within that affected radiated power and how it'll affect the people within that pattern itself. I also recommend that they, an independent radio engineer do a review in order to verify all of this work the applicant submitted, just as any other building project plan check requires now. A true measure ultimately will be when you actually measure the EMF once it becomes operational. It would be nice to see in an ordinance a requirement for routine unannounced inspections by independent radio engineers to further definitively say if it's in compliance. But make no mistake, future wireless facilities will continue to change the demand for bandwidth and faster speeds for the 21st century. 5G will require smaller, more frequent multiple transmitting and receiving antennas. I urge you to reject the current wireless as it is and make it as strong as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lori Putnam, and I live in New Monterey. And my neighbors and I live directly across the street from a cell tower that was approved in 2001. This is not a small cell cluster on a pole. This is a freestanding 30-foot tower. And I just want to make sure everyone's aware that that does exist in Monterey, in a residential neighborhood. The tower has been modified a number of times over the last 20 years, so we have some lived experience with this ordinance in its various iterations. And one thing that I have learned over the years is that when you approve a permit and put conditions on it, many times, if that's not monitored, the conditions will not be, the applicant will not pay attention to the conditions. That's just happened to us over and over and over. And my concern is that we need to strengthen in the ordinance what happens after a permit is approved. We focused a lot on when do we accept this kind of equipment in our neighborhoods, but we have not spent as much time talking about what happens after a permit is granted, because we know that permits, many permits are going to be granted in the coming years. I'll give you one quick example from our experience. In 2014, an applicant wanted to make modifications to the cell tower across the street from our home, and the city required that the site be landscaped so that the tower and its panels would be more camouflaged. It took the applicant six years to plant the trees that were required as the condition of the permit. And even the year after that, we were still following up with the applicant to water the trees, because they didn't bother to water after they planted. And those trees are only there because the neighbors had to take the initiative to do that. And I'm not blaming staff for that, because I know that the staff is not available to monitor every condition of every permit. But I would be interested in seeing in the ordinance more ways that we can monitor what happens after a permit is issued and make sure that conditions are met so that we don't just sign off on it and let it go, because it continues to impact the neighborhood on an ongoing basis beyond the approval of the permit. So knowing that more of these permits are going to be coming along, many of them will need to be granted, let's see what else we can do to help make sure the applicants are accountable for what their actions and that they do agree, they do follow up on their commitments and do what they agreed to do in the conditions of the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And for anybody online?
We do have one more person, Jean Rash is on the line.
Thank you. I'm Jean Rash. I'm a resident of Monterey, Monterey Vista neighborhood. Once again, four years down the line, we really need the Once again, four years down the line, we really need the advocacy of the Planning Commission. We, we need direction to have more dialogue and have the community's questions answered. The city council directed its appointed wireless ordinance subcommittee to develop the strongest wireless ordinance possible. When making its appointments, the city council assured the subcommittee representatives that staff would play a supportive role and not function as decision makers. The wireless communications draft submitted by the staff clearly does not adhere to the city's council's mandate. As requested by the Planning Commission, the MVNA submitted an extensive list of change ad recommendations. The community development director requested that we submit our recommendations in a specific format to which we complied. We have not gotten feedback about why our recommendations were not accepted, we don't understand the changes, we feel that the community is at risk. In particular, staff removed the wind load safety test as required by the wireless ordinance subcommittee. Staff included the option that allows noise creating equipment to be added post-application approval for a project that was initially approved without noise creating equipment. Staff did not add the requirement that the applicant must provide drive test data to substantiate a claim of prohibition, effective prohibition, significant coverage gap, something that's essential to the evaluation of the needs. The FCC determined that propagation maps are inaccurate and unreliable. We need that requirement in our codes. The representatives of the wireless ordinance subcommittee required staff to post all wireless application filings on the city website according to a specific timeframe. Staff changed this. They omitted minimum setback requirements from residents and schools. They omitted mock-up requirements. We have a rare opportunity to overlay with Carmel's efforts, get broader legal opinion, get a wider community dialogue and advantage each other. Of all the work that we are doing, we can do better, we have to do better because we do not want the proliferation of small cell towers in our neighborhood. Please do not approve the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online, Jennifer?
I see no hands raised.
Anyone else in the council chambers?
There are a few people who are watching online who have not raised their hands, so just in case they're wondering how to do that, there is a raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen if you're joining the meeting through Zoom or if you're joined by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. No hands are raised, so I think we can conclude public comments.
Okay, so I'm going to close public comment and we'll bring back the commissioners for deliberation, but I'd first like to just take a five-minute break real quick.
Okay.
And then we'll come back.
Clear the screen, please.
Just get a general feel for where they think we are with this ordinance and, and the work that we have ahead of us and then we can attack it accordingly.
Aye aye.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so let's start our deliberations.
I'll, I'll be having to start.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I didn't hear much on the other side tonight from the public. It seems like the subcommittee members, I'll be interested in to hear what mics have to say, but the public members of the subcommittee seemed pretty disappointed in that they, all this, how many meetings, 12, 15 meetings were just, according to them, were just ignored and we're plowing on ahead anyway. So I would hate them to have that impression and I would certainly hate that impression to be correct. It was hard to tell from the exhibits in the agenda report. What, you know, maybe I didn't read it carefully enough, but like Barbara Morris said, that there was nothing in there that really said, here's what the committee recommended and here's what's in the report and why. You know, I know that's a tedious process, but that, that would have been helpful at this point after all that time they spent to have some kind of a, sort of a point by point, uh, discussion of that.
At one point, we had a markup, a markup ordinance that had four different colors on it. You know, try to, try to, try to weasel around with that. It was very difficult.
You know, I, I read through all the comments and I, I want to thank the public for all the comments because it does help.
Yeah.
But going through about 156 pages, see, MVNA, they're very consistent. In fact, they repeated the same suggestions and I, I find that an overwhelming suggestion because at council, I listened to the mayor. And normally when people make public comments, he directs staff to recontact them about the issue that they were discussing.
Yeah.
Particularly when it comes to changes. As Mike said, we went through an awful lot of changes, 10, 125 hours, somewhere like that, um, of meetings. And it was difficult to keep track of all the changes that we, as the commission, subcommittee made. At the same time, keeping, trying to keep an eye on the objective. Because since then, there have been so many cases and we listened to Joe Van Eaton suggest to us things that we probably needed to cover and we directed staff to, to work with them to, to kind of give us some help in digesting some of those things. So I can understand why they see some changes, see a lot of changes. We have some people who just don't want cell towers. I think that we've heard tonight with the court cases, that probably is not going to happen, we have to have them. The, the federal government is jamming them down our throat, throwing billions of dollars to the industry. And then we have to understand the level of spread, I guess, because it's not just Verizon, Sprint, et cetera, that is pushing all these cell towers. Each individual contractor who does that form of business can build and, and follow the application process for a cell tower. And it had nothing to do with what Verizon wants because then it's subsequent that they contact those companies and say, well, if we build it, will you buy it? So we're stuck in more ways than one. And when I look at, when I, when I read the original 96 acts, when it talked about effective prohibition, that was part of what Congress intended. They had to go back and constantly change it, but still, one of the things I'd hope is that with, uh, what's Virginia versus the EPA is that, like all other regulatory agencies, they frequently push the wings to see how far they, how high they can fly. And I think that is what has exactly happened here, but so far it hasn't been enough time to set in. I'm sorry, it has?
Here, here, I was saying-
Yeah, it, it, it hasn't set yet because that's exactly what we're going to see and I, I truly believe that when I look at what's happening to kids and their brains from cell phones and adults, but kids, I think we're going to look back at this, it's going to be like cigarettes. That no matter what people said, it was, you have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt, not common cause, a reason, but a reasonable doubt and then till people start dying, I, I don't want to see that.
Yeah.
But what can the commission do? I, I did, I've listened to all the, the input and I suggest, and if necessary, I'll make a motion, that we look at all these suggestions, compare it to our, the existing ordinance and that we look at those changes suggested from the public to incorporate in the draft ordinance and then allow Kim to work with the attorney because some of them are going to say, they're going to say, we just can't justify.
They're going to do the same thing, Mike.
Yes.
I, I think we're wasting here, you know, you've got, the city attorney's staff is doing his job and trying to have an ordinance which will withstand a legal challenge. The people who are on the committee and the general public want an aggressive ordinance to protect them and some of them want to ban cell phones in the entirety, others want to ban them in certain areas. So you basically have at loggerhead purpose. Okay? So that's why I made my suggestion that we have, we tie the, the fire areas to fire insurance, to global warming, to the drought, et cetera, et cetera. So we have something which is based upon the health and safety of our people and is justified. And if we have that kind of, of something in the ordinance, the chances of it being attacked for the other things that are in it that may be questionable, I think go way down.
And I, I agree. So we, I think that we need to look at it in that regard and have it so that when changes are made, there's a little explanation that it's a legal issue. And with that, we can hack it around, but if we're just going to continue to continue, we're wasting our time.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, but whether it's legal or not, you know, you've got the second, fourth and seventh circuit who say one thing and then you got the ninth circuit, which has reversed more than 80% of the times on cases the Supreme Court take going another way.
Well, Steve, I think, yeah, I think it, multiple courts have-
Just a second, Michael, but what happens is when you have a, the circuits disagreeing, that's when the Supreme Court steps in. So we're in an area that's constantly changing and evolving. So in order for, I don't think we should pigeonhole ourselves into a certain kind of things that may be questionable, saying, well, it probably isn't, but it may be legal, we don't know. In other words, I think we should be a little bit on, push the envelope a little bit.
All right.
I don't think this ordinance does that.
Me too.
Let's get Sandy in here.
Okay. I, my thoughts are dovetail comments previously heard. First of all, the public comments all downgraded the proposed ordinance. The public comments were basically the same comments that we heard in April and they haven't- The public comments were basically the same comments that we heard in April and they haven't changed. And the main comments had to do with why were the subcommittee's recommendations not followed? Instead of which ones were not followed. So to go to Mrs. Moore, Barbara Moore, she said, if we could do an analysis of the subcommittee recs versus the draft in terms of those specificities that were not followed, we could address each one of these issues. Some of them were mockups, some of them were data test, drive test data. Some of them were, let's see, the harmful effect of radio frequency. The staff did make changes to the draft that was proposed in April. And the changes that staff made had to do with shells replacing shoulds, restatement of purpose. A lot of changes in the airport land use compatibility plan, licensed engineering, concealment and size. But that is not the same list that the public brought to the subject. They brought a different list of changes. So if we were to identify which ones the public was interested in inserting in the draft. And as Mike Brassfield said, you know, weigh each one, can it go in or can it go in? And then perhaps we could get to some sort of moment where we remute, move the disputed issues. It's just that, it's just two different lists of changes.
Well, and there's been a lot of comments regarding attorneys.
Yeah.
And even have more than one attorney, you're always going to have that. And sorry, I think I have trust in the city to hire a competent attorney in this, and I know Joe Van Eaton was. So I don't have no reason why Gail wouldn't be. So I did listen to Mr. Campanelli. And I thought he had a lot of good points, but so maybe we could listen to his commentary and just see how it fits in with our ordinance. Because I think that since we've had so many suggestions, that would also work into this, trying to solve this issue of who are we listening to?
Well, and Mike, but at the, at the end of the day, the public feels they were not heard.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
So I have a question. Was the subcommittee's recommendation sort of, was it included in our package today?
It was included in the April package.
Okay.
And it was the line out, strike out version with four different colors, which we can make all black and white if you'd like to see that again. And so I think one of the key points that would, I mean, I think it's sort of, as I look at the subcommittee draft, I don't think, and if we went through an analysis, I don't think we changed it that much. I mean, some of the, the language maybe changed, but the, the overall intent, in my opinion, there's maybe a handful or maybe five to 10 issues that were changed in substance.
I agree.
That's one, that's one discussion. The issues brought up by the public.
Airport stuff did have a whole bunch of changes.
The what, the airport? Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So the reason why that changed is we by law have to submit our ordinance to the airport land use commission once we have a draft. And we took that April draft and submitted it to the airport land use commission. And that group issued a decision on our ordinance and we had to amend it to be consistent with that. So that's an important point.
Yep.
A lot of the public comments we've received from in April, I mean, we have like about what, over 100 pages of new public comments.
148.
A lot of them, I mean, a few that have always existed, but the setback to residences, I don't remember that being in the original draft. The setbacks to schools wasn't in, the 1.5 times the fall distance of poles wasn't in the original draft. So there are a lot of newer emerging ideas of things that should be in our ordinance. So there's a lot of data there, right? I mean, I think it's easy enough. If you want, we can go back to, oh, Chrissy wants to speak. So I think Chrissy might have a, a good input. So I'm just saying, I think there's two different sets of information that's potentially available. And the, the question you're contemplating is, how do we wade through that to see if there was, there were good ideas there that we want to include in our draft ordinance?
Yeah, well, I think what I'm sensing is that we kind of owe it to the subcommittee to, not the multicolored thing, but sort of this a point by point, you know, here's the mockups, here's what we did, here's what they wanted, that kind of an analysis.
I, I agree. I think given the interest that expressed by everybody that's made comments and sent in letters and whatnot, that somehow as part of our work, we need to make them or frame it in a way that people can understand why their comments were not addressed or addressed, or how, how we responded to the subcommittee's recommendations. Because I think anything moving forward, we really need to make sure everybody has a clear understanding, because that's the one thing I heard tonight. I don't understand what's happened. Moving forward, I think it's part of our planning commission's responsibility to make sure all the information that we have out there allows them to understand what this process has been and how we arrived at the suggestions that staff has come up with. And the, and how we're going to consider them when we do our deliberations.
Well, my, my problem is that, that, that understanding doesn't solve the problem. The problem is that the, that the federal government is just blocking us at every turn. And, and the more we get excited about it, the more they do. So we're, we're falling behind in this case.
Yeah.
Well, this is, that's, I think this is where leadership on our part is, is required. I mean, yeah, the federal government is asking us to do a lot of things that I find really offensive.
But more immediately, we have the city council specifically asked for the subcommittee.
Right.
And to go through this whole process of 125 hours and then kind of muddle through that whole thing. I, I, you know, I think we've heard enough tonight that, that we need a, a specific kind of a, a response to their recommendations.
Was Mrs. Moore, was Barbara on the committee?
Christine keeps raising her hand, so let's give her a chat. Christine, you want to?
Hi, yes, thank you so much. I, I agree. I think we're, we're understanding a lot of what the commission is saying tonight. And I think in part, there's so much time in between meetings that maybe some of the explanations are lost or forgotten by the time we come back to this one. Which is why we asked Gail to do a pretty comprehensive overview and analysis on the law. Because many of the comments received dealt specifically with the effective prohibition standards and things like that. And I think Gail did an excellent job explaining what the law is there and, and how that fits in with our ordinance. Secondly, with any ordinance that's drafted, it, it always has to go through legal, legal review and approval. And the city council at no time has relinquished that requirement or obligation. So it, it needs to go through legal review before it can go to them. And so the, the wireless subcommittee was really in charge of policy. They did weight in quite heavily into legal aspects. And a lot of that is intertwined here. So I guess my point is that the policy pieces are really important and some of them are constrained by what we, we may be able to do legally, or what we might suggest as being the, the strongest ordinance that we can put forward. And we fully understand the intent of the wireless subcommittee and the policy guidance that is sought here. There's no effort to undermine that or thwart that. For example, this, this is just a legal drafting best practice. We don't need to recodify in our local ordinance, the ADA. We don't need to say you have to comply with the ADA because you have to comply with the ADA, whether we say it in every single code section or not. And so we pull out repetitive or duplicative or unnecessary references. And that's a legal drafting decision and that would be the lawyer's recommendation. And so I don't think the city council ever had any intention of saying, we're pushing aside legal review and we're going to just do something else. I mean, it's always our choice to follow legal advice or disregard legal advice. But we do have the obligation to put for them the best job we can do with what we were provided. So there were some policy changes in there that Kim can discuss and then legal decisions made. And we can discuss those to a point without, you know, subjecting the city to any sort of exposure or revealing privileges. And so it sounds like maybe the, the commission is requesting that we come back with, with more of that. And Kim and Gail, I invite you to say otherwise, if you have other suggestions for the commission to consider. Because we, what, what the public is saying is important and we, by no means are trying to roll over that.
Thank you.
But you just mentioned Christine.
Look at this man who has his hand raised.
Who's a, oh, even, all right.
May I suggest, may I suggest that we have the subcommittees draft ordinance and have a response to it from legal as point by point by point by point. So that we can say, no, this can't go in because of such and such, et cetera, et cetera. That will remove the confusion from anybody and people won't feel that they have been involved. And I think that's what's important.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Stephen. I, I was just going to mention that what Christine had to say about what their portion of, of their job is and their review and the subsequent changes that might have happened as a result of that, probably would have answered a lot of questions out of those 147 pages of, you know. I think, I just think we need to do a little bit better job of providing an explanation of if something just got tossed out, why it got tossed out in a little bit more detail than perhaps what we're doing right now. Where do we go with this? Kim, would you like to?
Do I have a chance to do my corrections yet?
I thought we would just go through this page by page and pick up all your corrections, but we may not be at that point right now, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Milich, if you have spelling errors and things, if you can just submit those to me and mark it up, I, I know we give you a hard copy. I'll be happy to do that.
I will, what I will do is I will Xerox, copy my notes and get them to you.
Great, thank you.
Xerox and fax.
Is that to Kim? You want that or Christie?
Yes, please, to Kim.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought actually the, the grammar and spelling was almost perfect. I didn't find many. You did a good job, Steve.
Most of the corrections have to do with no first, no sentence in the first first pair, sentence of a paragraph. There was only one typo and that was page 24.
Well.
No, excuse me.
That's our legal eagle eye.
I read everything twice.
So who's going to make a motion?
What do we do?
Continue, no, continue first, you know, well, I'll make a motion for.
So Terry is going to step forward here.
To continue the item to allow staff to do an analysis of the subcommittee's recommendations on a point by point basis with a, a, an analysis of which items ended up in the ordinance and why.
And which did not.
Exactly.
And which, yeah, okay, and which sort of point by point, which items got into the ordinance and which didn't.
And then may I suggest that it could be documentation from NVNA as to practical, not, not proper, the legal.
But that's, that would be a whole different can of worms.
Yeah, I'm going to leave my, my.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there? Second.
Is that, so Kim, is that clear to you?
I think it is. Yes, you want us to look at the subcommittee draft.
Yeah.
And can, and then we'll look at our, our, our changes and provide to you a summary of what those changes were and why.
Yes.
Especially on policy issues. I'm assuming like.
Yeah, I think we owe it to them.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think you're, are you looking more for point by point though, right?
Yeah.
Addressing the comments.
Yes.
And that is going to be probably about a six hour meeting, just based on the meetings we've had with policy staff and outside counsel.
Okay, if you look at those, a lot of the correspondence that we received the last week, they, a lot of them had sort of a short summary list of, I think 11 items that they all seem to mention. But you know, the mockups, the dry test data, the drive by test, you know, all this stuff, you keep finding the same items. Those, those 11 items certainly should be included. And, and I'm sure you'll find other ones. I don't know about the six hours, but I'm sure.
Well, the, the, I think the point is, is that moving forward needs to include some sort of explanation for all those people that have given public comment and have sent in letters and whatnot. I think they need to walk away from this process here and with the planning commission with an understanding of where we got to and how we got here.
Yes.
There just seems a lot of confusion about it. So we have, we have a motion on, can we have a second, Sandy?
Yes. Second.
Okay, we have a second. Further discussion before we have a roll call vote on this?
Yes, I would like to include, I would like to include in there that business about fire insurance and residential and school areas, unavailability. I think that's important also.
I, I will include that in my motion. Is that clear, Kim?
Um, if I can sort of restate what I believe the motion is and you can confirm. To continue the item to allow staff to do an analysis of the subcommittee recommendations on a point by point basis. Why did the ordinance or what ended up in the ordinance and what didn't? And the amendment to the order, or this motion would be that it include information about fire insurance and residential and school areas.
I want to make a comment on that. I don't think, I don't think we need to include what made it. We just need to include what didn't make it. Does that, this was a complaint session here.
Actually, actually, I believe Sandy that a lot of people didn't understand what was on there, but maybe morphed into something else.
Ah, well, that's true.
Well, I always think that the, the ones that made it could say on page 37, you know, item I, whatever. But I was wondering about Steve's fire insurance thing. Is that clear to you, Kim? Or no, Steve, Kim's read back of, of her, is that what you meant?
Not, not entirely, no.
Okay, go ahead.
So it's more, it's more what effect what effect on the city's ability to deny or polls, 5G polls based upon a lack of fire insurance in a fire area and residential and school.
High hazard, HHC.
Pardon?
A high hazard area, HHZ.
Well, more than that, high hazard, I mean, I don't know, CDF, Division of Forestry has a high hazard area. We also have insurance companies that, and they have, and they have zone.
City of Monterey also has it.
Okay, well, then we need to find out whether or not what areas fire insurance is not available for. Okay, or it's available as such.
Let me ask this, Stephen. You find that out, what is it that you want to do with that information? Be able to use it as a way of denying a particular application in a hazardous area?
Yes.
Fire, I mean, why wouldn't it just be a hazardous, some sort of hazardous designation?
Well, because of the simple fact, if you, we just say, oh, it's a fire area. Okay, that will be looked upon as an excuse to deny it. But if in fact you base it up with a rating from an insurance agency showing that we're not the only ones who think it's a high fire area. Okay, but it's proven we can't get insurance. Well, what it does, that, that's game, set, match. Okay?
That's not quite the way I understand it works. When you're declined by an insurance carrier, there is a group that the state has put together to ensure that the cost is going to be substantially higher. Like from 4,000 to like 18,000.
Well, then we have to say in a high hazard area. They use that fire zones A through L.
So as, I'd like to ask Kim to read back one more time. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm still. Yeah, I, I'm still not sure I cap, I think I captured, I captured.
Stephen will be able to.
So it's, I, I have Mr. Milich saying, what effect, and I, I think there's something missing there, but what effect on the city's ability to deny or oppose five G poles based on a lack of fire insurance in a high fire hazard zone?
Yeah.
May, may I suggest we don't want to use five G because in a few months it might be six G.
And just sort of another thing is Sandy, a couple of meetings ago, you mentioned how they may be going to satellites in the, the, the near future. And so I was thinking about that and then uh, and I mentioned it to Chrissy that, well, can we require a bond or uh, for removal of the uh, uh, the, the polls? And uh, it was answered, yes, we can. We can't require money, but we can require them to put up a removal bond.
What, like goes in, right? Yeah.
Um, okay.
Should I restate the motion before you vote?
Can I ask Christine if she's like cringing about anything we're saying here?
She looks like she's cringing.
Me cringing?
Just a smile.
No, I think we get it. I think we get it. Sorry, my smile looks cringey. I'm not trying to look cringey.
Your smile is fine.
No, okay, well, that's good, if you guys get it. So we have a motion, we have a second. Are we ready to have a roll call vote on it? Yeah, yes, okay.
Can't hear you, hear you.
Continue the item to allow staff to do an analysis of the subcommittee recommendations on a point by point basis. Why did it end up in the ordinance and what did not? Second, review effect on the city's ability to deny or oppose five G poles based on a lack of fire insurance in a high fire hazard area.
Good, perfect.
Okay.
Great.
Second, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any further deliberations? Seeing that there's none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Um, actually, before we, I take the rest of the vote, I want to clarify. We voted to continue, but we did not pick a date certain. So if we are not picking a date, it should be tabled.
Oh, okay.
Well.
What do you recommend, Jim?
Um, I think we can potentially continue it to September thirteenth possibly, what do you?
Good.
Okay, good, I'm okay with that. Okay. Do we need to change the motion?
Um, if we can just, if you can agree to, and Sandy to September.
So I, uh, the motion is everything that, that Kim just read, to a date certain, September thirteenth.
Yes.
Sandy, agreement with that as a second? Okay. First and second, any further deliberation? Okay, back to the roll call vote.
All right, thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latasha?
Yes.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Thank you. And that motion carries.
Okay, uh, Commissioner comments?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I, I have another issue on this topic. One of the, we did, that, that motion did not cover many suggestions made by the public on issues not mentioned in the motion. And those are such things as the distance on a fall zone. Uh, and issues of who is the actual builder and who is the, the contract takeover? Um, the number of transmitters in a certain area.
Were these new items from?
They were in the discussion of tonight's meeting.
Tonight.
Um.
So one of the things I, I mentioned earlier is that if we're gonna get back to the public, we need to answer their questions on their suggestions. And that's why I volunteered earlier to make an emotion that we do that.
Kim, wouldn't that be part of your analysis as you go through these comments that you're determining?
I think that's a different effort, um, cause so that's hundred and plus pages we've received since the last, from, since the April public hearing.
Okay, so how does it fit in? I, I mean, just kind of procedurally. Some of these comments are new above and beyond what we've been working with, the documents we've been working with. Is it appropriate to separate the two issues or?
I guess, I, I guess one of the things the planning commission usually does for us is comb through those comments and suggest these are the ones we would like you to research in more detail. I mean, there's.
So when you come back to us with your analysis, we're also gonna be going back through the ordinance page by page. Is that correct?
You will have the ability to, you know, to discuss the ordinance in any format you want. Do you want to discuss it globally? Do you want to discuss each item? Um.
Is that a time where it would be appropriate to address the newer issues that have been brought up?
I think what might be appropriate is if you want us to do the subcommittee analysis, we'll do it. That you take time to read. I'm sure you already have, but you know, digest the hundred and twenty-five pages. And if there's specific policy issues that you want to explore in more detail, um, you can, you can suggest amendments to the ordinance. You can ask for that to be included. You can ask for analysis of that. And if you can focus that for us. Um.
Okay.
I think that would help, at least that would help me.
Yeah, it would be nice. Like for, for instance, I didn't, Mike mentioned that um, distances to schools wasn't included. That's a, kind of seems like a big one that would certainly want to be addressed.
So maybe the commission is able at this point to say, based on your reading of the letters already, say, these are the, the key issues that we heard that we would like to have addressed. Um, I heard.
Should we pull back the motion then and redo it?
No, I think your first motion can stand, cause I think that's what you expect from the subcommittee draft. And then I guess the second part I'm asking you is there, through the public comments, are there specific issues that you want explored in more detail? So I heard distances to schools, fall zones, number of transmitters, building, like who's building the facility versus who's gonna operate it? Was there anything else that really?
It was distances to schools and residences, actually, I believe.
Okay.
I agree with that, Kim, because these people tonight said, you never answered my question from April the twenty-sixth. So you still have to do that basis. Kind of what did, and what did. The public comment through this evening. We can identify other issues that could be like a third one. But not part of the point for point.
Okay. I, I feel okay.
So I'm not sure I have a motion and second on how you want us to approach the received since April. Well, do you want us to look at these specific issues that were just discussed? Do you want to make a motion regarding that? And we'll come back with a discussion on distances to schools and residents, fall zones, number of transmitters, the builder of the facility, uh, facility versus the operator?
So who's gonna make that? You wanna make that, Sandy, or?
Actually, I, I'll be glad to pull that material and refine those questions that are asked. Typically, I think there's about six or seven submitters that ask the same question. So someone just, I just need to, would need to go through and check and see if there's any others and just basically codify those.
Hi, great idea. You come up with the additional list, then that separates that.
And I'll, and I'll send that, I'll send that to Kim so that, then she can distribute it.
Excellent.
Kim, does that make sense, Steve?
I'm not sure. We don't usually do it that way. As, Chrissy, do you have any thoughts? I mean, or is that appropriate?
I think um, it's just an individual commissioner submitting questions to staff to be addressed and that's, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it seems like you were asking for a specific motion be made with this shortlist that Sandy just mentioned, or sorry, Mike just mentioned.
I think that's definitely one option, is if the commission said these are the specific issues, but it sounds like the other approach, which I wasn't familiar with, was like one commissioner submitting like, please address these issues or look into that. So we can do that.
Keep it in that realm there.
Okay.
Okay.
I can, I can supply all the material that goes with it. So actually, you already have it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, so we were on Commissioner comments?
Uh, I have one comment. There has been a lot of changes. And one of the things that the subcommittee addressed, we spent a lot of time on actually was a checklist. And I don't know how that checklist has worked out, because that was one of the things we suggested. We probably need to go back to the commission periodically for review and updating. So I don't think we've even addressed this issue at all. I don't think the public has seen it. Yeah, I, I agree. Kim? Any ideas?
Well, so the planning commission approved the checklist, was it two thousand nineteen? Uh, and so we've updated it since then. Um, I think it's been working fairly well for us, but um, after, my, my goal was, is after that we revised our ordinance, that I'd bring back the checklist and we would make sure everything's consistent with the new ordinance. If you're wanting us to attach the current checklist um, to the next agenda report, we can do that. But I think that might be, usually you get your ordinance revised and then your checklist, cause for example, the new ordinance has all of the submittal requirements codified.
And, I, I agree with you.
We'll need to update the checklist. I just saw it as a sequential process.
That'll be fine. I just wanted to mention it because it, we haven't seen it.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, we're all approaching our maximum work for the evening, so we're gonna be on to uh, informational reports and staff comments.
No additional comments.
Okay. Uh, planning office update?
Yeah. Nothing beyond our written report.
Hey, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Kim. You know, did anybody say this is just a fine piece of writing? It's so well organized. It's so easy to understand. I think some minor mods is just gonna bring it right to where we want it.
Yeah.